Discussing ARPA funding. Yeah, start without Michelle then.
How's everybody doing this afternoon? All right, so this is kind of what we got so far as the working group, kind of what we're looking at focusing on. Maybe for what some of the products to get done around here at the courthouse. I know Gary's gone through and done a fantastic job of kind of laying out everything that we're looking at doing.
So to give you a little summary, what ARPA, when we talk about the ARPA funds, what they are. ARPA funds are federal funds that were given to local municipalities, county government nationwide from the administration during COVID Act. And this is a one-time funding shot. It's not an annual payment. It is a one-time deal. In that document that I provided for you guys to see, it kind of gives a summary of why we put the working group together. Together is to identify various projects that we feel are necessary for the courthouse for maintenance purposes, repairs and so forth. Part of the conversation with the group was that we felt it was important to use this funding as one-time funding to do some of the necessary improvements to the courthouse that we all, that we kind of all recognize. Probably are not going to get done on a normal basis because some of them are quite expensive, such as the, you know, it's a wonderful facility. We've used it for public hearings, Public Service Commission hearings, and you know, there's a lot of things downstairs in the auditorium that need to be updated. The bathrooms are in a random shape. They need to be updated. The auditorium is not really uniform for lighting, acoustic heating, there is no air conditioning, things like that that we look at that we feel should be updated and advanced, and these ARPA funds would be a good project for some of these expenditures. In that document that we gathered, identified the working group members of the group, we've got Craig Kaitzen, who's the maintenance director of the courthouse. The county commission has previously appointed one by a sitting on that board. There's a vacancy there for that. So if the commission wanted to entertain having someone from the current board be part of that working group, that would be great. Himself with sheriff's office, Chef Boss and Director Heating Services, and Tisha Sacco, Indian U extension office. He's been here on that board. Below that is kind of the ARPA timeline, that is, when deadlines occur regarding these funds. The first one is March 3rd, 2021, where if there was any previous cost that these funds could be allocated for, that was a deadline to make those expenditures. That would have been basically right after COVID hit. December 31st, 2024 is when we need to have specific projects identified and money allocated for those projects. And December 31st, 2026 is when these ARPA funds must be spent. Okay, so we have some time here. One of the biggest problems we're running into as a group is making contact with contractors and trying to land on contractors. Everybody's busy. Some of these projects might be beyond some of the local contractors here. Some of the bigger, larger projects, especially with the auditorium, that you have to get contractors, biz markets come down. And we're low on the telephone. We work with these contractors and they're even looking for it. So it's difficult to get them to submit a written proposal, so to speak, and so forth. Below that, on the first page, are the pre-approved expenditures that the commission has already kind of approved, tend to go forward with and spend some of these funds. So far, the commission has approved or allocated $148,500 for four various projects that have been identified that need to go forward. One of them is the renovation of the men's bathroom and auditorium. The commission approved spending up to $50,000 for that project. That has not been done yet. We're, we've recently got proposals on those, on those projects. The Hazleton shop, you allocated $40,000 of ARPA funds to go towards the renovation of the Hazleton shop. Most of that work has been completed with the exception of the overhead door that Skyder talked about earlier. And $50,000 of ARPA fund was going to be dedicated towards the repair of the roof in the north section of the courthouse. That is basically from above where we're at, that needs to be replaced and repaired. And then $8,500 was allocated for replacing the galvanized water lines in the lower portion of the courthouse. Replacing those with copper, so the galvanized line, the galvanized line are, they're at risk of leaking and they're, they're getting so, they're almost, so those need to be repaired. So those, those, those projects have been pre-approved, tentatively, for $48,000 that have been kind of earmarked for those. On the second page of this document that you have, please, at the working group, we've kind of identified different projects that need to be attended to and that we feel that should be looked at with a high priority towards the improvements towards the auditorium, renovating that and so forth. Then with courthouse improvements, there's incredible, we're positive things with you as maintenance directors of the courthouse for further explanation. We do have a lot of proposals for those things from various contractors. And some of the other items listed here lower in that list are just ideas we're discussing possibly down the road. They're the lower priority, but I think our first priority needs to be this courthouse, the auditorium, and the infrastructure of the various buildings that the county owns, whether that's the county shop, the courthouse, the auditorium. Those things need to be addressed. I know a lot of the caulking issues on the exterior of the building are shop, water leaking in behind the brick. The front step in front of the main entrance doors of the courthouse are deteriorating. That, that it's, it really needs to be addressed before it gets really problematic. And, and these are funds that can, can address those difficulties. And with that, I'll throw it over to Craig.
Yeah, so mainly it's, the big thing we're looking at is obviously getting the auditorium office, you know, is I know we have met before. Oh, pardon the process of going through and getting the bathrooms taken care of. Now, the proposals that I have gotten for that have come in for each bathroom, coming in about $30,500 a piece for each one. Then after that one, the next thing that we're looking at is doing just the lowering of the ceiling in the auditorium itself. So bringing, bringing that ceiling down just for, for, for purposes of the HVAC ventilation system that will be installed in there for a proposal of $30,000 for that part. The only thing I missed from that one so far is waiting to get together with Jack for doing the actual lighting for, trying to get some more lighting down in there with, at the same time of that process of that one too. I know, like I say, we have previously already talked about the HVAC system itself. And that was the one where for proposal lead, that was the one for $59,334.71. And so there's some more work I've got to do with Twin City on that one because of when it goes to putting insulation in, the install for that. There's some things that I got to have Twin City do. So we're, you know, at the process of doing that too. We got to look at having Twin City redo that roof since we're going to be there at that time. That's one of the things where we need to have done at the same time with that section replacement as well.
In that proposal for the HVAC, there's, you know, two proposals. One is for split units to be matted on the interior building, which is cheaper. And the other system is a 20-ton HVAC system matted on the roof of the courthouse, which would be forced air, which we can better ventilate that entire auditorium above that lowered ceiling versus everything on one wall on a split system to get all that ventilation here. So.
So you're still talking about lowering the ceiling there?
Yeah, one of the things we want to do is lower that auditorium ceiling, not, you've got those hanging lights, the glass ropes. Maintaining those, but bringing that ceiling down four, six feet, wherever it is, to above those hanging ropes. And then the HVAC ductwork can be in that, in that system.
Is that the ceiling, ceiling that is in here?
Uh, no, the ceiling that is in the auditorium is quoted at top to higher than in this one here. Yes.
Well, it used to be a basketball court, wasn't it, one day?
Yeah.
Your back.
Yep. So with that, and then again, with that, and one of the other issues too, when those types of projects is getting these contractors coordinating together. So having an electrician come in, add some additional lighting down there, obviously when that ceiling is put in. Having the HVAC system put in prior to the ceiling being lowered. So, you know, everybody kind of working together, coordinating between the contractors to get that, get that accomplished. In addition to that, doing some modifications to the stage area.
Do you think that officially will be a stage for more space?
I don't think, I think that will be a project that would be overwhelming to do and the historical, it's going to play a part in there. Coordinate some of these renovations with the historical, getting their, well, some of these.
That's actually the state historical register, isn't it? That's not even like that.
Probably.
That's like a state because we signed it as a, that you're loving front of the state. I mean, there are certain things like the stage that are, if it's under the historical register, there's restrictions to what you can.
It's going to be very tough.
Yep.
And it's, but what we are talking about, what we're looking at is maybe using the footprint of that stage. So rather than having 40 feet of stage, 30 feet of stage, wherever it is in front of the back, putting the storage, some storage capacity at the back of the stage and then building a large wall so that you don't need, you know, 30 feet of stage depth-wise, maybe only 20. It's one thing we're looking at too. So then re-racing that wood floor that's up there and trying to do it right. So that it's a very usable venue for anybody. One of the things that we, we get complaints on is the current heating system, it's on the way, you have to turn it off, you know, stage. In the summer, there's no air conditioning. It makes it very, very humid. You can fly.
And then I think I love having the air conditioning in there too, isn't, you may get people that'll be more enticing to come here for hosting events and that kind of nature as well too. So actually get some more use out of the facility during the summertime.
Dan and Gary love this stage and they like the lighting up there too. I know the last.
It's great.
Felt like the chicken at the grocery store. We were up in the bright stage there, yeah. That public hearing, that was, it was.
That's where, that's where we're getting more lighting down. We're, we're, we're everybody sitting out on that wall level down on the main floor, getting some more lighting.
The speaker system was terrible. The speaker system was terrible.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, like I said, with the auditorium, I mean, there's a long list of things between the video audio type improvements to the stage improvements, to the heating HVAC system, the bathrooms, the lighting, the acoustics, all that stuff. Make it more user-friendly for everybody.
I agree with Gordon, like taking that money and putting it in your house.
I think it's a great opportunity where you're not stressing the taxpayers on it. You can upgrade your courthouse. You know, that, there's a lot of work that, there's a lot of work that needs to be, needs to get done. That's, you know.
And these are projects, like I said, they do go normally by report and they're going to be expensive. So this funding is an ideal opportunity for the county to make these improvements and the repairs to the courthouse in general, especially in the exterior part.
I like that they're, I mean, they're long-lasting investments. I mean, you stick money into the bathroom and the auditorium, it's there for 20, 30 years. I mean, when's the last time we did major renovations down there? Probably 50 plus years ago.
Right, I mean, courthouse was put up in 32, maybe 32.
And that addition was also in 32 or was it built up against that structure?
It was, it was part of that project.
I said the WPA days did it, didn't they?
Yeah, I think the major, last major renovation at Congress, they tore the old wood floor out, the maple flooring there, it was down to the concrete, they didn't tile it. And that's probably about the only other improvements in the 30 years, almost 30 years of that tenure.
It's probably when they did the toilets and the sinks in the bathroom too, that.
Right, yeah.
It's pretty rugged down there. It's rugged down there.
Page two of the document, it is a fluid document. It's going to change here after, because that's kind of where we're at, whatever that is. Yeah, and so forth. I know that a conversation with the, I watch our report, she's looking at possibly trying to digitize a lot of the old county records so that they're preserved down the road in their property. So she's going to try and get a proposal for that to get those documents digitized.
Well, you could argue the health and safety benefits of that too, because that dungeon down there where the vault is with all that stuff, I mean.
If something was to, if this courthouse was ever in, those documents would be lost forever.
Well, Lord knows what's in some of them documents. I mean, you pick up 50-year-old stuff. I mean, who knows what some of that material is? I mean, you pick it up barehanded. I mean, there's stuff in there. I mean, there's, I've been down there. There's stuff.
We got paperwork going back to 1884 in some spots.
You know, on the, on the, on the conversation of a possible fire, our current fire alarm system in the courthouse is activated, is way outdated. Does it work? Yes, sort of. If it is activated, it doesn't go into a dispatch center. If it goes off on a Friday night at 2:00 in the morning, there's a fire here, nobody hears it. It doesn't go anywhere. You're not going to know that there's a fire here until somebody walks in here Monday morning. So getting that firearm system in the courthouse updated with some additional sensors that need to be placed in various parts of the courtroom and having that alarm system go in the dispatch center so that after regular business hours, if it does, is activated, that the party department can be notified. In my tenure here in Amish County, I can think of three situations where my staff came in at midnight, working patrol, and the fire alarm was going on. But you don't know it until you walk in and there's no outside audible alarm, it's just inside. And if nobody's here to hear it, it doesn't exist. So.
So the, the, well, no, the update at this point is you guys are, you guys are still gathering estimates or coming up with project ideas and.
Yes, it kind of, kind of be super obvious, still, when they have some of this, since getting people to get back to you on stuff. Trying to, you know, trying, trying to get just three people to get back to you on some of the projects has been tough. I'm not going to lie, it's been tough.
Well, it seems like you have similar contractors bidding multiple parts of this project.
Right, yeah, that's what it kind of makes that easy. They can choose some of those.
Right, and it's enough of a project to get them to come down, you know.
One of the major contractors at biz market, it'd be a general contractor, and they have the subcontractors, some of the same companies that they work with. One of the issues and one of the proposals that you have here is the proposals for the bathrooms in the auditorium. That definitely came in higher than any of us saw it was going to. But again, nobody submitted bids. I don't know if there's any room for chase on that, but with the contractor on that proposal. But we're working on $61,000 for the two bathrooms and a year pay $50,000 for that.
As a, coming from a contractor's point of view, when you're driving 60-plus miles and you're going to rip a wall open and not know what you run into out there. I mean, there might be some wiggle room. I mean, they might get there and find out that half the stuff they wanted to do is not necessary or not as extensive. I mean, they're probably planning for a worst-case scenario too in that. So.
Well, I'm hoping that's what it is.
Well, I mean, at the same time, I'll tell you, a bathroom renovation is never cheap. I mean, it seems like it's just the bathroom. By the time you purchase fixtures, you start, like you want to do some flooring. You're basically renovating the entire room, not just the fixtures or a mirror. I mean, you're going for the walls and everything, which probably is necessary. So.
Correct.
I mean, that's project. And to do it twice over, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, they might be able to combine some mileage and labor and things like that, you know, on some of that. So you, they're probably bidding it to you as a worst case, hopefully, and you might be able to, especially if they're doing multiple phases of a project. If they're doing part of the auditorium and the bathrooms, well, now you're, you know, you've got multiple jobs on the same site. You're cutting down on mileage. They're carpooling type deals and instead of basically just getting one bathroom, you know, so. There's hopefully an opportunity to combine some of that and offer them multiple stages and hope that, you know, part of the negotiations, seeing if they'll work with you a little bit too, you know.
Sure, sure. Is there a kitchen up there beside the stage?
That is on the north side of the building. So actually, as you come down the stairs by the sheriff's office there, you take a right, or you go through the left and you go into the auditorium. You take it almost immediately right through the store on the right. That gets you into kind of where I've got stored space for like my cleaning equipment and what have you. And then right behind that to the north, there's, there's some old kitchen that's in there.
I'm sure that's a lot of digging also.
It's not terrible. It's not terrible?
I notice Craig says it's not terrible. Michelle's bad footbod.
Again, one of those things where it's something, but it may have to be the most user-friendly facility, but, you know, we're kind of, I mean, there is, there's probably some things that can be done to that kitchen. We haven't really specifically identified those things yet, but, you know, it's something that would be looked at anyway.
So where did you go so far just with biz markets contractors?
Yeah, I have tried to get ahold of some, some local contractors. I've been reached out over towards the wish, in the, in the individuals, like I'm a holdup from that direction. They're just like, starting to get to be to the age where they're just like, that's just too much work for them to even take on. They even kind of did some call back and forth with a couple of other guys that they know around the wish area. And they were just kind of like, yeah, I don't know if that's a project for me to even take on. So that's, there, there is part of that one there too. And then, like I say too, it's, I've gotten ahold of Capital City Construction, has literally been the one that has actually gotten back to me for, for any of the proposals so far.
So this is mainly basically just an update at this point.
Yeah, if you look at that second page, like I said, some of the stuff here, you know, just kind of number two courthouse improvement. Replace the galvanized water line, which has already been approved. And you can see those proposals for that from two different companies. Replace and update the firearm system, which we briefly talked about. I think definitely is a high priority that we need to look at, making some updates there. Social services is looking at trying to modify that counter and have a safety barrier in place. Basically is what they're looking at there in that lobby area. The extension office is looking at possibly installing some partitions in their back office area so they have more privacy. In the day of, basically in today's world with Zoom, you have two employees in that room that are on two-step or Zoom meetings and it becomes problematic when you can hear each other in the background and they don't have any privacy, so to speak. That would be one, one thing on their list of things. And making various updates to the offices, whether it's over, some overhead lighting issues in the hallways or some of the offices or any other electrical needs that might be needed in the courthouse is another issue. On the exterior of the courthouse and some of the improvements, remove and install the handicap ramp by social services, which is referred to as door two. There's some issues with that that Craig can elaborate on, but next to that handicap ramp, there's a void. There's an old staircase that goes down into the basement of the auditorium. That hasn't been used in 50 years, I'm guessing. It's become problematic with water seepage in there, snow getting in there. We've got rodents sent down in there in the bottom. And filling that void, closing that door off, and then putting that new handicap ramp in there. Right now, the way that handicap ramp is, is kind of like a, like stockade, anywhere that works with cattle, you've just got to go in circles and get around. Updating that whole ramp system, so to speak. Some of the other things that they look, Eric Craig's looking at is recurring, ensuring registering and caulking around all the windows in a courthouse. One of the, really, how many windows are in this courthouse? 70 some?
Oh gosh, it's a lot more than that. It's somewhere around the 92, 96, if I remember correctly off the top of my head.
If you ever get the opportunity to drive around a courthouse real slow, just count the windows top and bottom, it's 80 some windows. And not, not only the windows, but just the, the doorways. And then some of the caulking between the bricks is, is being, is removed. Water and moisture getting between their building over your player.
What is that, point you call it or what do they call it?
Ah, to be super honest with you, I'm very familiar with the masonry work when it kind of comes to that stuff. So I'm, I'm not, I'm kind of wishy-washy. I'm actually languish forward, but yeah, it's, you know, like when you get up to where that top cap is over your top roll for your brick that's up there. That caulking that's going around that, it's, it's literally peeling out. I mean, it's, I mean, you can go up there with your, with your hand, you can grab onto something. You can probably pull like a four-foot strip out of it. So it's just definitely, it is time to get that stuff sealed up. So it's going to go get that brick breaking up more.
Item three, courthouse, exterior repairs subsection C, repair the main entrance steps out here in the main landing. If you walk out and leave today and look at that, you'll see where a lot of that stone has started to flake, moisture is causing a lot of that damage.
Extending, you can probably.
Yeah, and trying to get that repaired before it really gets, gets out of hand. Yep. Subsection four, sheriff's office, maybe possibly concrete, that storeroom building that we have out back here right now is a dirt floor in here, 32 by 40. Maybe updating our ATVs for these search and rescue things. They, they work fine, but again, they're over 10 years old and maybe assigned updating, trade a man or something like that, maybe possibly do something like that. And looking at a live fingerprint, live chance system. And we do a lot of fingerprinting for the general public. Anybody that works in the public school system, Strasburg, Hazelton, Litten, Nerking Home, federal government, state government, all have to be fingerprinting for background checks every five years. And one of the biggest problems we're running into is taking latent prints the old-fashioned way. But so many of them are being returned, probably over 50% of them being returned is not readable. They're legible to us when you look at them, but they don't, they can't, the computer system that reads them isn't able to point out the 13 to 15 points necessary per print to do a background. It gets very frustrating when somebody has to come back four or five times to do that. So that's one thing that we were, we're just kind of putting on the list. The Hazleton shop, subsection five, you guys have kind of approved that already over the door, speaks for itself. The Litten shop, I've been talking to John previously, we looked at maybe adding some additional office space out there possibly in the future. And Strasburg, when I talked to John, he said there was no known or expected improvements to the Strasburg shop using ARPA funds. There are some funds that are going to be coming, federal grants for a new video security system for the Strasburg shop, the Litten shop and the courthouse. But that's a federal grant separate of this here project. So that's, that's not included here.
Excuse me, Gary. Who takes care of the grant money and applies and puts applications in?
A lot of that now comes through Homeland Security, a lot of those federal grants, and that's through Mary's thing. That's usually where they initiate.
Okay.
And then we usually, myself and Mary or Marla, so all work together to try and, you know, get some paperwork necessary and stuff. But a lot of that now is distributed through Department of Homeland Security, which goes through DES. And unlike years ago, these Homeland Security grants now, they might come out the first of the month and say, you got two weeks to submit your paperwork. And you kind of have to have things kind of, yeah, real quick. They don't leave much of a window. And they might offer a million dollar grant statewide, but they have $6 million worth of requests. So we were lucky that not only our video security system was approved tentatively, but also some new locks and doorways for the courthouse here too, which Craig can elaborate on more. So.
Yeah, because that would be in front of doors that's going down to where the vault area is at, the door going into the boiler room. Gosh, do I listen to me now? They thought we're doing key fob systems, so it's, we've got a little bit more secure system out here. So like, see if somebody loses a key, you can just deactivate that key fob instead of having to re-key the whole exterior of the building for some, for some of those keys. It's, you know, just like too, it's going down, going down, down the stairs into the vault area where that, where that door is at, getting that actually ripped off and then sealed off. That's where, we're kind of somewhere, part of the, doing the handicap ramp over there in that area is kind of, it's got to wait for that part to get done before we can kind of get to that handicap ramp part and get that backfill and everything. So there's, there's kind of a little timeframe on, on certain projects that kind of get finished up and tidied up before we can even do a couple of these other projects that's in with that too. And that's, and that's, you know, also going around to the old, the other exterior doors, like the ones up by the back of the kitchen. That one's got, you know, just a regular, regular door that's on there. And so that's, that needs to be updated. Then we've got our south door too, that's the, the brown door that you go to the auditorium, that getting that updated as well. So it's just, we got better security.
Some of those doors are residential type doors with wood frames and replacing them with commercial type doors with metal frames and a proper lock system. And like Craig said, having a key fob system. So if you lose a key or somebody loses a key, you can deactivate the fob and not change out the lock. So, and we've got federal grant money coming for that stuff. Anything else for Craig specifically? The whole purpose of this is to make you guys aware, keep, make sure that you're aware of what's going on and so forth. So what I would have to mention today is, on the first page here, we already, like, mentioned thoughts on that. We've got two proposals that are a little higher than we initially earmarked money for. Go forward with that. And you know, it's just getting harder to lock these guys in. They're all, all these contractors now are getting ready for the string work. So I want to kick that can down the road or.
Kick it too far down, room 26, that's not too far away. By the time you get to all that, you have a lot of work here. By the time you get all the line up, it's.
All these also in the bathrooms or just the internal cuts?
Just internal.
Okay.
The mention for the bathroom.
It's a big mistake.
It's $30,000, it's a little bit of money, but if you do bathroom, also there's a chicken.
Your bathroom kitchen would come smart.
Well, and I think if you're looking like at this front page here, you know, some of the other stuff, like if you're doing the galvanized water line project at the same time as the bathroom, you might be able to, that plumber might be able to do the work for the other contractor, you know, I mean, you can kind of, if you get enough of a project going, you can start to combine some costs. You can probably get it to go down a little bit, you know.
Right, and I kind of don't like what was the other proposal on that one too, is I don't, where, why was taking someone from Capital City to get to me? Because they were even having issues trying to get a sub-plumber in to, to do some of that work. So I know that, you know, even Capital City themselves was having issues trying to get individuals and help work out on this project.
Right, well, I think that's where, if you have a bathroom project going on at the same time as your galvanized water line project, you have a plumber on site and you, you know, maybe work with them in the beginning to go, hey, would you be the plumber for this contractor in the event that they need to replace connections due? hey, would you be the plumber for this contractor in the event that they need to replace connections due to things that aren't a part of their quote? You know, and instead of having someone come all the way down to do a half a day project, they're already here doing this. And then before they leave checking, hey, we need to do some work here. And that's where you could probably cut some costs and combine some projects and.
Sure, absolutely.
Get things done. And so that's where it's probably beneficial to try and do the bathrooms at the same time as the water lines kind of deal. That way, if you have an opportunity to do it, you can not do in the bathrooms in August and do in the water lines in December. And now it's two months apart and nobody's around, so.
Any local guys that step up and you plumery, like, sure, these guys are my way.
To the best of my knowledge, you look at the city, city listing for it, there isn't even a plumber listed on that, on that sheet for local contractors for plumbing on that stuff.
They got all the licenses.
These places.
So what about, when they put in this stuff, are they going to put in PECs, Craig?
Yeah, these would be new.
Yes, I had a contractor with a group of plans on that one, and he said, they have to buy a PEC. Said, no, I'd rather go with copper on that, since I just feel like copper is going to last you a lot longer than that PEC. Because I'm not, to me, PEC is still kind of not fully, fully well fleshed out in my opinion. But it's one of the things where I feel more comfortable going with copper for the building too. And this way, I don't have saving water lines running down, you know, down the hallway where it is going to be exposed a little bit. So I just feel more comfortable with going copper.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but just for clarification, for the commissioner, those replacement of those galvanized lines are basically from the account room downstairs, running towards the end of the building?
Yeah, run a little way over to the kitchen area.
It's not the entire building, it's there in a section of the building downstairs.
Well, I would say, I mean, move forward with the bathroom project. And the galvanized water line project. I mean, I know you want to stuff, but I mean, pick your bidder, or whatever you want to do.
Sure.
And come to us for approval. But the same thing with the bathrooms, I guess I would suggest at this point, if someone's bidding both of them, see if maybe they get that cost on a little bit if they're getting both of them. Try and buying them and see if they'll just, you know, if they're at sixty and you want the budget fifty, see if they'll at least meet you halfway or something. So you could try and, you know, stay within relative striking distance of your budget.
Do them conversation in the background.
Right, I mean, I think if you're offering them multiple stages of the project, see if they'll come down on the price a little bit. Combine some mileage or do something. I mean, if they're in that far, I would think and they would. I'm not going to, they're not going to cut the price in half, but.
Right.
You might get, you know, a few thousand off here and there, something, every little bit counts. I mean, if they know they got enough work to justify their time here, I'd say they'd probably be able to do something like that. It's worth a shot.
Right.
And then the other thing, I guess, does anybody from the board want to sit on this working group? We meet, we don't meet often, maybe once a month or every other month, that's it. If not, that's fine, just throw it up there. Yeah, we'll provide, we'll continue to provide summaries and updates, you guys know what's going on. We'll be moving forward with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe someone will change their mind and then get back to you, yeah. I'm always raising my hand, that's how.
Thank you, Jimmy, three times.
We met in, what was it, August, I remember it was Monday, January, February. We were in November, we didn't remember.
We met two weeks ago, I think, or last week, a week ago. Um, and then I think we met in October, actually.
Yep.
So we, it's kind of maybe monthly, we have.
So it went from we don't meet that much, to now we meet once a month?
So, bitch, yeah, way to go. And you're exactly selling that open vacant spot, you're right. Thank you. Tim said almost one thing and everybody just like. Well, the agenda items are all concluded under the fact that we tabled the setbacks discussion, so. That's where we land. So setbacks, if we can't come to a resolution, we'll have to set some kind of a meeting for a later date, I guess. So now that everybody's had a little bit of a chance to regurgitate, not much because we've been busy, but does anybody got any difference of opinions, ideas?
And this isn't final, all this stuff?
This would be, I mean, this setback part would be final. I mean, what we decide today was, there's probably not enough time to really amend it and go through the processes again, so. I don't mean to rush anybody and I have no agenda or intent to try and push anything through. The only reason why I'm adamant at getting something done is because I know there's deadlines in place. I'm, you know, I don't want to jeopardize not getting anything done. When it's pretty well agreed that we need to do something, that's pretty much not in dispute. And I don't want to drag it out. It's kind of like reminded me of this ARPA discussion, it's like, well, we got these bids. And well, we're going to keep getting more bids. And it's like you said, you got a deadline. At some point, you have to make a decision, or you're going to end up to the point where you get nothing done. And there's plenty of individuals in this county that want it done. Commissioners agree that something should get done, this should get updated. I mean, it wasn't even in compliance with the state, so. And that's why I feel like we should probably act. We had the public hearing, we had time after the public hearing. And it's a big decision, I know. And that's where it always is like, well, maybe we should think about it more. But you can get to a point where you just, you know, we could attend meetings and we could all agree at a different distance and every one of them is either too strict or not enough, and you could go that far too. I, I guess I have confidence in whatever we do with the simple fact that this variance option, although it does add steps and it does create another step for both the companies and the landowners, it gives the landowners more of an ability to decide how close this goes to their property. If they want to negotiate it closer, it's there, right? And, you know, but I think about the individuals, like that we talked about at that public hearing, that only own five acres or eight acres. And they're not a part of the negotiating process because they don't own the land the pipeline is going on. And they should have some say. A resident in this county, we're losing people, we need people. And, you know, their residence has to count for something. I know you're impacting it, where now this person with the small tract is impacting this person's land. But it goes both ways too, because that individual that owns that quarter of acre land is now impacting this person's residence as well. It's a give and take. And right now, the way we have the system, there's really no recourse for the other person. Or at least if you have the variance, both people are involved. And maybe them neighbors get together and go, you're being too ridiculous, you've got to keep it a mile from your house. Well, okay, maybe it's only a half mile. And they can come to an agreement where the guy can still get his project and this individual gets a setback further than five hundred feet, you know? And I feel like that's where the variance kind of covers a lot. It's an extra process, but it should be a difficult process. It should be a part of a major negotiation. It's a big project and it's not the only one. We're focusing on this project because it's the current one, but it's, I mean, we just had DAPL come through, you know? I mean, we had the wind farm project, there's been, you know, there's talk of solar, there's all these projects. And the property rights angle should get, I don't know if you'll iron it out, but you have to get to a point where you're allowing some people to have some say. It can't just be one individual saying, I want it here, and this other individual just like totally suffering the consequences in my mind of this one. Because that person that owns that piece of cropland right there, if they don't live right next to that cropland, then they're not even impacted by it. But this person that lives right next to it that had no negotiating abilities is impacted by it more. And that's not saying there's guarantee to be a leak. And even if there is a leak, there's no guarantee it's right next to that farm. But I feel like I'm a small tract owner. There's people around me that own property that don't even live in the same state as me. They could easily sign up for any kind of a project, a pipeline or anything. I mean, unless I find out through a public hearing or something, I wouldn't even know that project was existing until the easements are already signed. And, you know, and that's hard for me to grant, because I'm going, my property doesn't matter just because I, you know, I mean, I'm right there. I'm living here, this guy lives in South Dakota. And he signed up for this project and he let him take the whole quarter if they want it, because he doesn't live anywhere close. He inherited the land or bought it as an investment. Now I'm sitting here with my wife and daughter and I'm going, this project's going a thousand feet from my house and I have no say? Like, that's, that's what's driving me, if you really want to know. And that's where, if they come to me and they go, hey, what does it take to, you know, allow it that close? I mean, what would be fair to you? You know, and we can get to some kind of a point, at least I feel like I've approached, I could converse with them. Maybe it's a project I totally support. And I'm like, you know what, good deal, you know, just let it go. And I can sign a variance. And if I want to be tough, then at least I have some setback that at least protects my property to some point.
At least my chance.
Right, well, I just feel like, if it was me, I'd want to at least be a part of the discussion. I know it seems unfair because you're going, well, property rights and why should this person get dictated? But a residence, in my mind, holds more value. If you're going to place value on something, someone living in the county, supporting the schools, running a business, you know, farming the land, whatever you want to say, no matter how big that residence or property is right there, should have a say in their own protection of their own property. No matter what the project, no matter what, it doesn't matter if it's oil, gas. I mean, shoot, you could even argue water to a point, I mean, but not as serious. But a water leak is no joke neither, I'm a big pipeline, I'm just saying. It just, as a small tract owner, that's where I feel like this process helps at. That's my belief. And no matter what distance you pick, it's probably going to be right or wrong, like we said. And we could go through and we could get engineers and we could get scientists and we can do all that stuff. But in the end, I don't even know if they're going to come to any kind of a consensus. We're going to end up picking and choosing somewhere in the middle anyway. So I feel like a lot of us have some kind of a number in our head, just, let's just put it out there. And we'll just discuss it and amend it until we get somewhere and let's do it. The folks out there want us to make a decision.
They want to know.
And they want to know. And I don't want to jeopardize any other deadline or situation because we're too afraid to make decisions.
I'm thinking in any city, Hazleton, Wenton, Strasburg, wherever, should have a two-mile distance. That's my feeling. The farmers, as we stated, the residents, should have like a mile and a half, that's my opinion. On this, not on oil, all pipelines, but on hazardous material pipelines, that's my feelings. That's my feeling.
I feel the same way there.
If it's right or wrong, I don't know, but that's my feeling.
Yeah, I don't know if we can distinguish it between hazardous or not, because like you said, we don't know.
Well, I think if you want to cover your basis for the simple fact that the current project that we're dealing with is the one that's the most concerned right now. That's no, it's no debating it. It's not being discriminatory to pick on this project right now. It is the topic of discussion, it's the reason we're discussing it. If you want to cover your basis to at least cover this project, then down the road, we can amend this. You know, like you said, based on a plume study, you know, you can probably do that. And it's probably up for reevaluation. You got to go through the process and proper channels and that's, that's fine. I don't think we have the time to get as extensive as we really want. And I think we have to at least make our wishes clear to participate in this process. So if you want to, you know, I think we made some of the amendments that we made as far as what we were talking about with including the CO2, as well as other things like non-potable water and the hazardous, deemed hazardous substances by PHMSA. I think that covers a lot of other areas. Were in agreement that we, that's fine, so let's amend it that way, so at least that's covered. And, you know, if you don't want to do it based on the size of the pipe, at least for now, because you don't have the right facts, I think that's fine, that's something that we can, we can continue to work on it. So, I mean, at this point, I guess I don't have the right answer or the wrong one. So if you guys want to make a motion, I'm, I'm all ears with it. And I think, I think, I think whatever we make, I think, I think any farmer doesn't offend me like a mile and a half. He's setting any city limits at least two miles away, you know.
It's going to be right for some and wrong for others.
No doubt.
That's just the way it is.
Well, let's face it, I mean, really, we're going to talk about it, the last couple of pipelines that have come to account even twenty-four inch. You could really make a setback for a twenty-four inch pipeline and cover the last two or three projects. So really, I mean, you know, the pipe sizing is a nice idea and I think it's something to probably reevaluate. So you're not just booting it out for every size. But with the current project and the current state of what it is, we'd be landing at that number probably anywhere, pretty close to it. So I guess I don't see a problem with coming with just a general setback for now, right?
I think that'd be something, because I think, you know, it's hazardous material if it's a six-inch pipe or if it's a twenty-four inch pipe.
That's true too, I mean.
So hazardous material, it's a matter of, you know.
What do you feel, Gary?
Well, I was satisfied with, you know, Aaron had.
Well, Gary already made a motion, he already has plans.
Gary says the same point where we did before, the only difference is we're adding in the two miles per town.
Well, and I, I will say one thing, I like that for the general fact that once you enter a city limit now, I mean, now there's homes, it's tens of twenties feet apart now, and now you can say densifying. Population is getting denser, you should really be concerned about that. We had testimony that the school was, had some concern. I mean, you know, the school board president was there, just didn't voice what was the right thing, but was concerned. It was close enough, you know, and it is to the north of the school. Generally, the wind blows out of the north, I mean, north, northwest, northeast. So, I mean, you could argue that that impacts to the school and to the city is, is a very serious consideration as well.
So right now, we're not, they're not close to a town, Hazleton would be a close to town.
Right, and I believe it is right around. It's, well, I suppose it depends on which corner, the organized boundary you would measure from. But yeah, I think you'd have to be, be relatively close. I don't think it's that far off. You know, like you said, if you wanted two miles, I don't think they're like.
They're not that far back. I mean, they're probably two miles starting from one. If you want to go from the center of Main Street.
Well, right, it depends where you measure it, right. And so I think, I think you would just have to do it from the, it'd be the.
The city limits.
The corporate boundary, what you'd call it, I suppose? So you buy the corporate boundary, I mean, you're. No, right, like you do like basically the corporate boundary or city limits. So then you'd have to go to the closest point to the city limits and from there, yeah.
Two miles back. And then what do you think of it really, that it's not far back?
It's not, well, like you said, it depends on a variety of different scenarios, you know, the wind, the time of the year, the, you know, I mean, everything. I mean, even, I mean, let's face facts, it happens at four in the morning versus four in the afternoon. Your response time is different. I mean, I'm not getting up at four in the morning and just.
You might not.
Sharp and ready to go, right. I mean, we're at four in the afternoon, you're walking down the street and you hear a siren or something, your response time is going to be way better, so.
And you have a fire.
So I think. Well, right, and like you said.
You have to dispatch with something, I mean, I'm not saying, I don't want to think the worst-case scenario, but you have to think of it, because it's safety of the people. How fast are you going to respond?
Well, who's going to respond to that? You don't got to figure that out too yet.
These little desolate areas, there's no people left. And I know, and I don't want to degrade nobody, but someone doesn't want their route changed or disrouted. That's their pattern to move. And I'm sure it's probably the most reasonable route for them and the most costly fish.
Oh, right, I mean, there's no doubt about that. And I would imagine that changing their route adds expense to it, just like anything else. Also, these setbacks do affect if it's going to be on one individual's property or another. But you also have the variance. So if it gets setback off of someone's property and they want it on their property and they sign the variance, the pipeline doesn't move really. Or, you know, I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the reason why I have confidence in the variance. It's just, it's another layer, I understand that, it makes it a little more tedious. But it also forces a conversation. And it also forces the opportunity for someone to have a little more leverage, to tell you the truth, to go, hey, I do want this on my land, but I want it here, not here, or something. Because if you don't grant some of that, it's just, it's a very difficult process. It's intimidating for folks and they are.
It's still going to be hard for you, let's say your family's here and the pipeline comes here, there's a family here, this big farm that's here says, I don't care if it goes up on my place and you're right over here across the road. You're not going to be happy either. If you grant some variance that comes up by his house, you know what I'm saying?
I understand that, but if you're going to talk about homes that close, we could go ahead and talk about city limits as well. I mean, folks want to build a pole barn right next to their house and the neighbors don't let them. And guess what, they usually don't get it. I mean, that's the, you know, a wise man once told me that, you know, a community is a commune, you know, when you, you become a little bit of a communist. It's a running joke to the sense that you sacrifice some freedoms when you do live that close to someone too. And that, that is kind of the argument, because when you talk about property rights, it can't be one-sided. Everybody has equal property rights. And you, you just, you don't want to do any harm. First, do no harm is kind of the scenario in life. I mean, so if you're going to make an impact that this person wants this, but it would be detrimental to this person, you got to go to the doing of no harm, rather than, well, this guy has property rights too. And you give it to him, well, now it harms this guy's property values or anything. I mean, it's never going to be perfect, there's always going to be a dispute. But I think the dispute you're talking about is going to be few and far between.
I'm just saying that could be a scenario.
Well, it could be a scenario for sure. But you could also have a scenario where one guy puts it next to someone's house and that guy doesn't even, the other guy doesn't even know it and has no chance or no recourse to even negotiate on it too. And now I go and I have a project put next to your house and now it degrades property values of you and you had no opportunity or no recourse to that. Well, that's not fair to you either and your property rights, so. And that's where. And that's where, that argument is a difficult one because it's a two sided argument.
Property rights, I'm talking about the life, the value of somebody's life of some house.
Well, I'm right, and that's where the setbacks in my mind, if anything, always keep it from someone's property rather than putting it closer. The farther away, the safer, that's not an argument, but, I mean, obviously putting it ten miles away is a restriction, is gonna be difficult. But the farther away you put this from people, the safer it would be. That's probably true with any project, so.
Well, I've voiced my opinion.
Well, I mean, we should make a motion, I mean, if somebody's, I mean, we've been discussing. You guys have discussed your thoughts pretty plainly, I don't think anybody's really arguing against them, and make a motion.
I can make a motion on what I stated, on the two mile.
Okay, so the motion.
And the mile and a half.
So it would be a two mile setback from the city limits?
And we can maybe make that more clear when it's drawn up for clarity.
Well, really, that's pretty clear in my sense, isn't it, not Joe? I mean, two miles setback from city limits, I mean, we only have the organized cities, otherwise there's no other ones, so that.
And a mile and a half from established residents in a rural city.
Established or occupied?
Established, I would say, because there's a lot of established out there.
A lot of established, but people are probably gonna be curious to move back.
Right.
Or they got a shop over there and they got a shop there, but they don't live there.
And then are you also including in that motion the, kind of the amendments we made, the subsection B, or the beginning of section B? Which was the inclusion of CO2, non-potable water and the other hazardous materials by PHMSA? Because we did agree to that, I mean, I felt like, so that's included in your motion as well? Did you wanna include, well, I guess there really isn't, I don't know, if you're gonna do established residents, I don't know if the, any other building is even.
Well, if you have a schoolhouse out there in the middle of nowhere.
Well, that's why I'm kinda, I mean.
That is different.
Church, St. Michael's.
It's not really established, you know, it's shitless church out there.
Well, nobody lives there, they take the color and light, it's not established.
They get together all Sunday.
Okay, well, we'll just, we'll have to kind of stick to some, or we'll discuss more, I guess if we need to amend the motion, we'll do it. So the motion by Commissioner Terry is for a two mile setback from city limits and a one and a half mile setback from established residents. It also includes CO2, non-potable water or any other substance deemed hazardous by PHMSA in the section B, beginning description. And then the other thing was to add potable water to the disclaimer at the bottom, so that we, we were making sure that we don't affect the potable water projects that have been going.
Right.
Okay. So that is a motion made by Commissioner Terry, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culber. So any more discussion?
That's also what they're there, they did wanna go full term.
Well, the variance would be, yes, so the, I don't, I think in this case, I don't think the city limits, I, we would probably have to put, I don't think the city limits, I don't know how you'd even apply for a variance, so it would probably just be for the established residents. But that wording could be, because actually the variance setback, the variance for the setback from an inhabited residence, if we just put established residents there, then that would cover that, because city limits, I don't think you'd qualify, you'd never get everybody. But you would have to, you would have to amend that, I mean, that would have to.
What was the city, have any kind of regulations?
Not outside their borders, other than if they have a, a extra territorial zone. But I don't think that would be, that would only be a half mile anyway, so that wouldn't, they would have nothing. I don't think they have any jurisdiction outside of that to even do something with that really.
Well, do we have jurisdiction like in the city of Hazleton?
In the city of?
Exactly, as far as the city, does the mayor have the same, I don't know.
In the city, well, I think the city board would act if, like if a pipeline would go right through their town or something, yeah, then that would probably be the city board, I don't think so.
What do we do?
No, but we'd have up to the city.
City limits, right. Yeah. Okay. So we want it from the city limit at that point, two miles out.
And Hazleton doesn't exercise any extraterritorial jurisdiction, so they, they would only be able to zone up until their city limits for now anyway, unless they change their ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any, is there any more discussion, are there any more amendments or changes to that? Because Joe, I mean, with the inhabited residences, we're changing it to established, do we have to amend that part of that too? With the variance?
There's a lot of established residences out there, there are no pit, nobody's living on them.
In this county?
We got feet lacs and stuff, and people that, the one over here got feet lacs.
But as part of that draft, I mean, the amendment with the variance, we talked about inhabited residents.
Yeah, I would, I would keep it consistent though.
Right, so I mean, we'll have to amend that with the.
Right.
And then do we wanna do anything with that? Because we have the 200 feet from any other building or surface body water.
200 feet?
200 feet is the current number from any other building or surface body water.
Yeah, I'd make that by order.
So if we're gonna. Well, that would be the discussion of what any other building means, you know, because if you're doing established residences, which is basically you're talking about operable places that someone maybe isn't living, but did live or could live again, is what an established residence is, well, now, that's gonna cover most of those any of the buildings, so. Well, yeah, I mean, if you have like any other building, because it's pretty vague.
That's vague, you take, you know, like where I've got those trees that develop.
Yeah.
And I've got water and power there, so they could come, whatever, right next to that tree, establish it, and I would build two years later.
Well, I think that, that's some of the discussion that did come up during the public hearing, was there are some residences out there that aren't living in full time, but they have plans somewhere down the road. And that's where, I mean, if you wanna consider that and participate with that, I mean, that's where, you know, the established residence part covers some part of that, but if there's no structure on there, or maybe just like a pole building and no one's living there, then, you know, then currently it's 200 feet.
Yeah, I don't like.
You know, so if that's.
I'd say that should be a mile and a half to, crip, almighty when you think it. Joe Hans has got a place and he wanna use plant and trees, so the conservation, he doesn't wanna live where he's at permanently. In 10 years, he retires and wants to move this spot and there's a CO2 pipeline or hazardous pipeline in the area, 200 feet from that tree grove. That won't happen, he will not move that, I wouldn't do it.
Well, that's where, I mean, right now would be the stage where we're in discussion here. Well, if you're gonna, you would amend, we would amend the motion, vote on the amendment and then vote on the amended motion. Because right now, your motion is for a two mile setback from city limits and a one and a half mile setback from established residents and then the amendment to some of the wording, so that is the motion. If you wanna amend the motion, we have to amend it and then vote on the amendment. And if the amendment passes, then you have an amended motion and you vote on the amended motion. So if you wanna add, change, the only other thing would be, I don't, it'd be a problem, is you probably could have a second motion on the second part of the. I mean, if you wanted to go through that process too.
Well, you can send the first motion.
Well, the other thing to do is you vote down this motion and you come up with a new amended motion and you vote on that one too, so. I mean, there's several processes with it, but, I mean, if you vote on this, Joe, then can you, can you just keep voting and amending on different parts of it?
So are they gonna do it, throw it out because it's amended to the initial proposal or no?
Well, I mean, that's part of the process around the rules of order, you can't just, once you're into discussion, the discussion is on the motion. If you're talking about changing the motion, you have to make a motion to amend it and make those amendments. And then you vote on that, then that motion becomes amended and then you vote on the amended motion.
Maybe we should just go through each amendment you wanna add, vote on them one at a time, and then pass the ordinance with the amendments that have been approved.
Well, that'd probably be the best, because otherwise we're just gonna, I mean, because you can't have the grandest motion of all time to approve everything here, so. I would say for the sake of discussion, the fact that we have a motion and a second. I think since we have basically discussed on the parts of the motion that we're willing to agree on, we would just go forward with that. And then if we have another amendment to another part, like if you wanna amend the distances from the other parts or the other buildings or surface body water, we can do that in the motion. And then, like you said, like Joe said, once you have several motions, basically amending the ordinance, then you approve the amended ordinance, just so we're all on the same page. So the motion was for a two mile setback from city limits, a one and a half mile setback from an established residence, the addition of CO2, non-potable water or any other substance deemed hazardous by PHMSA as a part of section B, beginning. And the addition of potable water in the last sentence of subsection B to B2. It's motioned and a second. Madam Auditor, will you call the roll?
Abilene?
Yes.
Holm?
Yeah.
Culber?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
So that motion is approved. So now with those setbacks in place for that, the other discussion would be if you want to amend the setback for any other building or surface body water. The other thing is not within 100 feet of a highway right of way or section line unless perpendicular to the set right of way or line. Well, that's, I, I don't know if there's really much to dispute with that, because in my mind, you could argue for faster response times and safety, it's maybe better to have it closer to the highway, I mean, you could argue that. You're also impacting drivers, but it's also maybe easier to get to and to try and resolve or something too, so. So the big discussion here, I guess, really with that, since we made all these other amendments, would be that setback from any other building or surface body water. But one thing I will also state is with the St. Michael's church, I don't know if that's even covered with any of these setbacks. Well, I don't think it would, it's not established residence nor is it in city limits. Well, you know, if you're gonna go with gathering places, I mean, that's, where is that, where is that list?
It's about 21 miles from the, the church.
St. Michael's church, I knew that was the one church that was involved inside of this mile.
That's just one of the odds.
Well, that's the only one with this particular project we're talking about. But then, you know, if they have a project down by the Barker School, that would be another building that would, you know, you have, you do have buildings out in the country that are not in city limits and are not considered an established residence. The only other thing to do would be to amend it and to include established residences, churches and schools. You could amend that, so the motion we just made, or create a separate setback similar to that for schools, churches and.
And what about water, what effect do you know that has on it?
Well, I know one thing, I would suggest not getting too far in the weeds with everything, because as I said, the Public Service Commission is gonna do especially the environmental stuff. They talk about water and things like that, I feel like the Public Service Commission's gonna cover that. Our main review for zoning and setbacks is gonna be for the residences, that's, that's our, that's our role. I mean, PSC's involved with that obviously too, but they do take suggestions from the local governments. Whether or not they honor it is up to them, but their suggestion, our, our suggestion at least means something there. Well, once you get into environmental, that's where you should have interior consults and things of that nature. So when you talk about the effects on water, that, you're gonna have a harder time probably honoring a set of things. But yes, there is one church on this particular project, which obviously is the St. Michael's church.
How close is it?
Josh just said, 49 miles, so it's inside of a mile, so. Well, the suggestion with that would be, if you wanna do a setback from any other building or surface body water, and then you could also add a setback for churches, schools or, I don't know, public gathering places. I mean, if you have a concern over that. Because otherwise, right now, that would probably, I don't see how that would have any protections with the current wording.
We have to have some for them.
Plus, there's a residence next to the St. Michael's church.
Basically, there's someone inside, there's no way they're going in between.
No.
Well, no, right, that's what I'm saying, so if somebody is living there, then I suppose the established residents would probably cover that.
And there's somebody living on the east and somebody on the west side of it.
Right, but even, there is actually, there's a home kind of on site there, not, isn't there like a parsonage or something? I mean, so you could actually say then it would probably be covered.
She might have a son that lived right to the east and then his daughter was.
Right, right, you're right there by the batters for sure.
Right, yeah, it is right there.
And then that liar's to the south.
Yep, so then you have that scenario where they would have to. But they would have to, they have some variance process to get something past there anyway, then, so. So those are, this list is the 37 residences that are within one mile. And then the yellow is for individuals that are within half. So that was that list. And the rest of that is my notes from the public hearing, so just do that back when you can. Okay, oh, for the sake of time here, are we gonna, is there any more discussion here, any other amendments to the, to the ordinance?
So water, we're just gonna let out then for now?
Well, with potable water, I mean, as far as like a water surface and all that, well, that's a part of, it probably tied into an environmental study and impact statement or whatever, you know, PSC is usually covering that. I would say they're gonna cover that more than we will, so. Since you used the term established residence, I would suggest that we have something in there about changing that variance from an inhabited residence to an established residence. Because right now, it's inhabited residence. And that wasn't a part of the original motion, because it was getting to be too many amendments, so. I would suggest at minimum, if you're done making any motions, that we should at least correct that language in there. Right, because right now, it's inhabited and you have, I mean, we voted now to have an established residence. So if you're gonna have that, that variance language should match. That's what I believe, otherwise you're creating a conflict already right off the get go with your variance process. Meaning that, that and then the distance from any other building, if you wanted to increase, those are probably the two things left to do. Otherwise, surely not much left of that.
Put the coverage together and we'll make a motion, huh?
Okay, well, so then, so then if that's the case, you'd be looking for a motion to, to change the.
Well, we'll write it up, I guess, when it's done, unless, well, we'll write it up first.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'd say right now, basically, you're changing the, the motion would be to change the language from inhabited residence to established residence. That would be the motion to correct that. And then the only other thing would be if you wanna include that distance from any other building or surface body water. If you don't wanna change it, it's currently at 200 feet. Really not much left to change. The rest of it's all just language pertaining to the other stuff we already made the setback motions on, so.
Well, it should be changed. Just kind of for coverage, it's. I don't know, maybe, but it should be more.
500 feet at least.
Well, like I said, it's currently 200 feet, so. I honestly don't even know if that, I don't know enough about the actual setbacks in the century code of that, because if that's from an established residence or not, so I think in that case, I don't know if there is a setback from just a building out in the middle of nowhere.
I don't.
I don't know, that's what I mean, so, so whenever you establish, it's probably gonna be the precedent on that one.
I'd say at least 50 feet. Someone's got a big machine shed out in the middle of somewhere, did?
So what do we do here?
I already told you, I mean, the main thing would be to make a motion to change the wording from inhabited to established and then to pick a distance on the, any other building. It's tough to say with the any other building, because now, I mean, you're really starting to get exclusionary, you're just gonna pick distances. I mean, you can't have a setback for every scenario that ever existed ever, so. I think 200 feet is probably too close, I think it probably, I mean, I'd, I'd say, you know, a machine shed out in the middle of nowhere, that's, you know, that's, that's tough. Someone may live there, but if someone hasn't lived there for the last 40 years, it's tough to say they're gonna live there now and you can't have a setback to include the possibility of someone living in there forever. I mean, at some point, like you said, there's a difference, even some of the residences we're talking about is grandpa's old house that they're keeping up, but they still live in Bismarck and they have plans, people voiced that at our public hearing, so that's maybe acknowledgement. But now a building out in the middle of nowhere is, is starting to get a little difficult, because there's. to get a little difficult because there's buildings out there that people just have machine sheds on property too, I mean, I would say whatever distance you pick is just gonna be more of just a basic safety scenario. I, I guess I don't see a problem with 500 feet on that. I mean, at some point, you gotta start, if you have 10 setbacks that are all two miles, you're not gonna be able to find a window to put this thing in, so you do have to be careful with that, so. I guess in my mind, 500 feet from any other building or surface body water, that doesn't fit these setbacks is, is probably far enough. I don't know what else to do, we can debate that till the end of time, so. So I guess those are the two, the two motions, is to change the wording and change that distance. Somebody wants to make a motion to do that?
I would make a motion to change the distance back to 500 feet.
Okay. And you also want to amend that wording, is that part of the two?
Okay.
Because that's, okay. So the motion is, Commissioner Culver, to change the wording from inhabited residence to established residence, and to change the setback from any other building or surface body water to 500 feet. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Maturi. Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. Madam Auditor, will you call the roll?
Everly.
Yes.
Holm.
Yeah.
Culver.
Yep.
Magrum.
Yes.
Maturi.
Yes.
So now, just to be all fair and that everybody is understanding, the amended ordinance... Wonder how we want to do this?
We just get a motion to pass the ordinance as amended.
That's probably the right way to go, because we have everything stated out, we open anything, so. Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to approve, table, or deny the ordinance 23-01-01 as amended.
My motion.
The motion is to...
To say everything else on both of them deals?
To approve the amended ordinance. So Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the ordinance as amended, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver, is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. Madam Auditor, will you call the roll?
Everly.
Yes.
Holm.
Yeah.
Culver.
Yeah.
Magrum.
Yes.
Maturi.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-01-01 is approved as amended. Okay. If there are no other items being on the agenda?
No, the only thing is, are we going through the bids for John Deere?
Okay. The motor grader bids? Yes, we should do that, that is something we did not finish, and other than that would be the bills. I guess the one question I didn't ask, but the motor graders, were these motor graders getting updated? Did the operators have any preference? Not that that's a huge decision to make, obviously, it's not gonna lead on everything, but Skyler, was there any preference as far as like...
Not on the need to, I don't believe.
Okay, so that really didn't... Okay.
And you guys wanna wait and call a special meeting in two weeks so we can find some more numbers and figure out how important our budget is? Okay with that?
Well, then we budgeted, we budgeted to replace two machines, did we not?
I believe so.
Right.
The way it looks, the...
Right, right, but I mean, we had budgeted those pushing things.
I would just say, what, Mark, one day, yeah, problems with everything, or?
Not on these two, these two are, it's just, the only reason we're bidding these now is because of guaranteed buybacks in October. And really, kind of, can't pass up the guaranteed buyback.
Do you have a preference?
No.
So all in all, with all the machines, which ones have more trouble?
They're both the same.
They're mechanically all got the same.
Yeah.
One's got a weight control, one's got depth, one's got, yeah.
Well, it depends if the operator's wearing a cat hat or a John Deere hat, right? Because I mean, that's...
It's looking high age.
I don't know, I, I find both machines to be extremely nice, extremely workable, I think RDO and Butler are both excellent dealerships to work with, I mean, those decisions make it difficult. I will say, like viewing that cat blade at the shop, I mean...
Impressive.
Cat has a very impressive machine, I mean, it's, that's no swipe at John Deere, but...
It's kinda like the guys at the shop said to me that day, they said if they could take all the positives from the John Deere, the positives from the cat, and throw them into one machine, there wouldn't be no better machine, they'd be unreal.
Like if there was a brand called Deer Cat Pillar?
Deer Cat.
Deer Pillar?
Pretty common.
You're right, I just, the, the cat, the cat machine is, is very impressive. However, I mean, you're paying for it, I mean, that's obvious too, I mean, that's...
It's like a John Deere society extract, you pay for it.
Well, and like you said, if you're wearing a red shirt, you don't care what it costs, and if you're wearing a green shirt, you don't care what it costs, and you, I mean, about here, it's like $40,000 certain cent.
Well, when you look at it, oh, depending which one you call.
Probably if you look at the...
You know, like, you know, like, it's...
Well, you also gotta remember too, this is stretched out to seven years now.
Right.
I mean, you start talking 30 to 40,000 dollars, it's a few thousand dollars a year, though. I mean, that's where, well, I, it's not nothing, but you're right, I mean, when you're talking a 30 to 40,000 dollar difference over the course of seven years, when you're talking about whether or not a certain machine fits your needs or your operator's needs, that's why I was curious on any kind of preference, because, because I mean, you put a good operator and a machine he wants to operate, he or she, they're gonna, they're gonna do a good job. And that's where sometimes you can make the argument that the initial cost might be there, but, you know, and then you also have to look at the buyback too, and just make sure that you're comparing apples to apples and stuff, and so that's...
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you go with the cat, you should go with the bigger one, because it ain't that much more than the big John Deere, and plus the buyback, you get more.
Well, yeah, right, when you actually, like you said, when you compare the bigger machines, then it does close the gap.
Yeah, it does.
Instead of about a...
I would, if you go with bigger, I would go with the cat.
Yeah. Instead of a $45,000 difference, it's about a $20,000 difference, and then actually with the buyback being almost that much different. It is, it's close.
It's close.
If you go with the bigger machine. If you go with the smaller one, then yes, John, John Deere's gonna be much more better, but if you're going with the bigger machine, so I guess the question too is, I mean, do we want to get too many of the big machines though? Or what's your opinion, Skyler?
What do you think, Scott? Isn't big usually better?
Depends on where, if you have a really soft spring, that heavy, little bit heavier machine, a little tougher to get along, on down the road when it's a little softer. Talking to all the counties, different counties and different people, they said, everybody says you should really have at least one small machine in your fleet, so, and we do have that, so at a point, at this point, even with these two new, you decide to go with two big machines, we'd still have a smaller machine.
We'd be about half and half almost, huh?
We, yeah, probably pretty close.
Because we, we had two bigger machines and we got a third one coming.
Yeah, we five, maybe just, maybe just tipping over the railway point.
Did you resolve the issue with those rims? Were they were cracked? What is it, tightened rims or what is it?
Where's the road new?
Okay.
We don't know.
And they break out with bolts or otherwise?
Was more, but not.
Is it because of the V plow on the front and the wing, the excess weight?
I wouldn't think so, because the other machines are running them, so. And it, V plows and stuff has been on the front of motor grader for years, so.
Is it...
Is that bad batch of metal? I don't, I don't know.
Can I ask this, Skyler, and you guys, is it beneficial to trade these options every five, six years? Your V plow and your wing? Or are you better off to take it from your old machine, some of the third order term?
Oh, it's way better, no, just bet it with it on, they, it's better for resale value that's already on the machine. We don't get a V plow every time, we're just trying to update some of our V plows, so. And that's just a lineup, we don't have to decide that V plow. You do have to take into consideration though, when you add those stuff up, like your wing and your V plow.
One server.
Yeah, those are kind of, so you have to add those to those numbers, kind of, so.
So how many are we looking at? Two?
Two.
There's two that yet, that have guaranteed buybacks in October, yeah.
So we better off getting both big ones or one big one and one small?
You said we got a big one.
And if you feel like spending the extra money, you know, you're right, when you get the big machines, it closes the gap a little bit, but...
Yeah, right, with the big ones.
But you're also spending a lot more money too, it closes the gap, it makes them equal, but they're both more expensive too though, so. You know, I, I mean, that, the, the point I'm trying to measure is if this big machine is the way to go with a lot of them, then it's worth the money, and I feel like the machines we've gotten, the guys like them, but then again, we really haven't had some of them, like, like Ellison's cat, we haven't had that for the summer. In the wager, he loves it, but he might hate it this summer, or it just might not do as good as you're maybe thinking to, and now you're going, wow, we got these big ones coming, we're spending this extra money, and this is the value all there? I mean, that's part of the trouble, I mean, because it's not like the machines we've been buying, the 772s and the 150s don't move snow, you know?
Yeah, exactly, and your cost per hour really other two different sizes, machines really aren't that much different, as you said, you might know a little bit more fuel consumption during really heavy pushing with snow, but that's just because you're demanding that, you have an extra 30 horsepower, so.
More horsepower, more fuel consumption.
And during the summer, you might be either that.
Yeah, the summer, I'd say they'd be pretty close to cost per hour to be all the same.
Right.
So it's not like there's a huge significant difference in your cost per hour on a big machine.
What are they, hydro, or they like an IVT transmission?
Oh, they're like a, there's a gear system to it, so.
There is, there's one, it's a repo pair, okay.
Well, I guess in my mind for this scenario, since, you know, we're trading in two 772s, and, I mean, we haven't, really, the jury's still out on the big ones, I guess in my mind, I would probably be in favor of going with two more 772s, just because it is the cheapest of blade operation. We're at least getting the same machine back, and if we got two more machines coming up within the next year, and all of a sudden we have the summer, and we're like, man, that big machine is the way to go, then maybe we get the big machines for the next go around. I mean, it's not like we're done bidding blades after this, so I feel like we should maybe go the cheaper route in this sense.
Yeah, if you go with the smaller one, I would go with the John Deere.
Well, it's significantly cheaper than the big cat if you're going from one end to the other.
No, maybe it's $40,000, no.
Well, you're talking an $80,000 difference still coming though. If you're going, if you want to compare, you're going to a 160 cat versus the 772 deer.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where I'm saying, if we were trading in two bigger machines, I would say you probably want to compare to bigger machines, but I'd like to see a little more time with some of these bigger ones and see if it's really, so far it's been good, but I hate to get too invested in them, and then you find out later that it's just maybe not that much better, you know, to the point where it's not worth the money, that's the thing. If you're just getting the glowing reviews, we got this winter on them, this summer too, and it's like, man, this is the way to go, then I think you can start looking into some of that. So, because I mean, you're gonna have a significant payment difference from the big cat to the little deer.
Because the buyback is 14,000. That's why, if you go with the bigger one, but if you go with the small one, you go with the John Deere, but the difference is great.
I just feel like the machines will be resold and come back.
Well, that's probably true, and that's where, I, I guess that's where I would, I would just preach a little bit of caution in the sense that we know we're bidding two more blades within the next year. I feel like we have an opportunity to bring a couple more bigger ones on if that was the case. I would hate to just go bring on two more big ones, and then like you said, these new big ones just, you know, I mean, you're spending close to 70 to 80,000 difference on it. Yeah, the buyback makes up for some of it, but you're, you are talking from the big cat to the little deer. That's basically your two options we're talking right now, right? So we go with the big one, we're kind of thinking the cat's got the value, but if you go small, you're going deer, so those are your two choices, and that option, you're talking almost close to $100,000 difference, so that's a pretty big gap.
And I will tell you, on the next two, that we bid out in October or whatever, both operators are gonna have a preference.
They're gonna have what?
They're gonna have a preference on which one they want.
And they're leaning to what?
They probably lean towards the cats.
They lean with the cats?
Because that's just what they've been at usual, so, and they're more, really comes down to just what they want.
Right, but in my experience, the deer guys will run either one, the cat guys like cats. That's kind of what it seems like to me, I mean, if you're talking operator preference.
It's just like anybody, you put me in international, I don't want to run that because I'm just not used to it. But if you're there by sitting there long enough, you might like it.
Or if it's cheap enough.
Or if you...
Well, I feel like since we already were trading in two deers, they're newer deers, I don't think I've got any complaints from them. I guess my opinion would be probably just replace them with two deer 772s and then see what happens with those next two cats, because if you're thinking about buying bigger cats, and you've got guys that are preferential to cat, then maybe that's the time when you pull the trigger on something like that too then. And if the price point is way off, then I guess some of them cat guys will have to run out or run a deer. But you never know, in a year, it could be a lot more competitive price too, you know?
Maybe, maybe we'll...
Skyler, are they the same machines, the next two? That you've been trading in, so you're probably looking at the same numbers?
We're both, well, they're gonna be, what, 140 cats?
140 M's.
140 M's, so.
But maybe they'll be cheaper next time, they'll all didn't get it this time.
Well, like you said, at some point, I mean, I mean, at some point, there's probably gonna be a turn, because you can't just have one company significantly cheaper than the other forever, it just never lasts that way, so. If you're gonna debate it, so. I don't know. I really don't want to have a special meeting unless you guys are that indecisive on it, I'd rather just make a decision, so.
No, no, it could be hit and roll.
I guess my opinion would be to go with the two smaller deers, and just replace what we have with newer machines of the same. I'll make a motion to that. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to go with two new John Deere 772s and trade in 2018 Are we gonna need a snow wing and a V plow with that, Skyler, or?
Is that V plow, probably not, because, yeah, because what we give it are the...
Okay, as a part of the deal, like going with the, so, so you're leaving your snow 2s like that?
What I understand years ago, that you tried to take off the wings and the front lift roofs and everything like that, and it just became a hassle, and then traded value and...
They talked about, they said that's...
Okay, so the motion is to award RDO with the two 2023 John Deere 772s and trade in the two 2018 John Deere 772s, and so purchase the wings.
The other thing could be, he said till the year of September, would that have run into the...
Yeah, if there was...
Would be fair to fail.
So we do have a motion to that effect, is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm, is there any more discussion? Yeah, that is the one, probably maybe the biggest issue, was that there was a four to five month discrepancy on machines coming, and that, that kind of put a little bit of a bind when you're doing the trading too, because now you have this window where you need to have some kind of a loan or machine, so yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Which passes and we have two blades from RDO. Now the bills. You want to fold it to that, right, Skyler?
Right.
Good, so I gotta give her the something. Dave, you wanna empty out that green folder? Get it back to Skyler.
I'll get it over here.
These Butler ones, you want them back?
No, those are yours. You keep those. Just that Skyler likes them colored folders, because then he can put their combination for the next meetings and stuff.
These lease payments for two blades, is that more? Wow.
Those are those diamond?
Diamond.
Those are the diamond ones? I mean, the tip cutting edges? Or carbide, that's what they are, right? Carbide cutting edges, isn't it?
Well, we, we, I guess I don't know what you're asking.
So what was it? He said it was sixty-nine thousand dollars per.
That's just your lease payment.
Yeah, just lease.
For lower grader.
Oh, it's a yearly payment on a motor grader. I thought you were talking about cutting.
Oh, yeah, it said, no.
There's, there's two blades on that payment though, isn't there?
Yeah, two eighteen blades. It just says blade on it, yeah.
Right, but each one, the individual, the individual payment is about thirty-four thousand a year per blade, not Marles?
Well, they're getting more expensive.
Well, yeah, everything's getting more expensive, that's. My payment on my new excavator is a lot more than my payment on my last one too, that's. That's, that's not getting any better at all.
That one we purchased in March.
What's that?
That one we purchased in March, that blade that we bought in March, that eight twenty-two.
Yeah.
That payment is fifty-four thousand, a hundred and four dollars.
Right? Change. But at the same time, how much does a transmission cost on a used one? Because I mean, I just, I know that the first year, I think I was, the first year we started doing extended warranties, we purchased an extended warranty on one of those cats. And the transmission went out like six months later, and it was like thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that's what the annual payment on that machine, even with the extended warranty payment was. So that's why, I mean, lease payments are expensive, but the repair bills aren't any cheaper if you go and ride out too far too. I mean, it's, it's a constant game of, do you purchase new with warranty or do you try and rough it out with repairs? And the problem we know with repairs, are you gonna get done? Are you gonna get parts? I mean, you gotta wait for a transmission for six months and then you gotta wait a month for RDO or Butler to put it in. I mean, you're, I mean, look, even that's why we ran into issues with trucks and why we started upgrading trucks. We couldn't get them worked on no more. Take them out to Fargo, they'd spend three weeks on it, not fix the problem, you haul it in back to somewhere. You could, you could make a front payment for what we're paying to repair bills in downtown, so.
Aaron, sit down there, doesn't sit the end, dude.
Yeah, you can sit there, Dave. I'd just like to make room at the end here because I gotta do all the science anyway, so. What did they get now they had to do the, about eight?
Stuff they crushed the, they worked the thirteen.
Well, we hold rocky, that was, yeah, right. But even, I remember when I first started, we crushed that gravel at Vandermoor's, we were at, I believe, six eighty-eight yard. And then we included the royalty on that, so we were actually close to nine dollars by the time it was crushed.
I started remembering, I thought you told us ten dollars.
So the Fisher stuff that we did at Woolbaum was very, wouldn't call it cheap, but reasonable. Right, I mean, you're, I'm very unlikely that you will crush gravel at that price again. Marles?
Yes.
So I have a voucher here for seventy-seven dollars with the social service board for an oil change with Martin Oil. But then the backside of it says thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixteen. I'm assuming that, that's a road department bill then, or? Like that's Martin Oil's total bill probably, but? Okay.
And it's not going to be, um.
Social service area. I understand that, but the social, I, I just want to make sure when I pay thirty-eight thousand dollars for an oil change, okay. The way this voucher's written, that's what it looked like, Cam, it's like. Right there, I'm assuming, I'm, there's a voucher for the road department coming as well, I would assume that. Because Martin must have filled us at least once with a tanker.
What about it?
Well, like you said, that could have been a month ago, but I'll wait on that one just to be sure. Not that there was some kind of clarity player with that. Probably were not paying thirty-eight thousand dollars for an oil change. Those are the headlines for next one, that speaks favor. Delete that one. I don't use the paper. I do, I get the digital version, I get it at half of the air when it's. Really? Yeah, I wonder how many people read the paper later. I don't think that's a game, but sure, I'll go with that, I mean. Sample and all the hilltop gravel, everything was, you guys seem to be on the ball.
They have just a lot of this lighter break down, that's, day here, day there. And that's, it's really good gravel, so that's what's going for them, because you know, they make more gravel, so.
Old Rush on Discovery Channel, it's a lot kind of like gravel mining, and they got constantly conveyors, bearings, tires, you know, and then they got loaders, exembers, something going down all the time. But imagine that the repair nightmare happened in twenty-one, the rest of the. Well, I mean, the one thing I can judge about too is the Woolbaum, we're just very satisfied with their work, and that's. You're doing good work. And you said nothing to be things to say about, she was, worked out, it was a good situation for us. So Skyler, remember it says here that it says Woolbaum pit twenty twenty-two, Woolbaum at twenty twenty-three, and then it says Bunker for pit twenty twenty-three? That's where I'm guessing they, they must have minded that section line a little bit on Tony's. Well, I know there was a discussion there about, because Tony had some gravel adjacent to Kenny's and they were going to deal on it. So Fisher's, I guess, must have paid Bunkarders and then that's part of the royalty and then. Time sheet software, they were, they're still, they're testing that right now, right?
Yeah, you will see when you come to the new employee time cards, first thing you'll notice is John did the initial like he usually does, because he approved it when he prints them off.
Okay.
So then you'll, you'll no longer see his initials on them, because he's approving them when he prints them off, he's going to do an approval.
Sure.
And, yeah, we, we put a few people started doing it, and then the other ones that we haven't, haven't started doing it. They still fill out the time cards, actually, where the path and John ends, because I mean, we just didn't want everybody to listen to the same time and hold on. Nine different buttons, someone else on the different, everyone else is busy on it, so start a few one, gradually we're going in.
Like, you know, John told me he's kind of got some of the tech savvy, your guys may be trying it first, because they've had less questions. And then, you know, as he irons out some of the issues, then start using it for everybody.
Yep, so they can help all the ones that. Have questions, know the time.
The guys that are accidentally opening up internet browsers when they should get a oops, oh, hit the wrong button, yeah.
And it's a, I mean, it's a liberty, I think, so we're probably gonna find some stuff over there, have changes, stuff like that.
Well, that's the nice part about testing it, and you start realizing there's things you can't do, you thought you could, things you don't need to do, and you can kind of cut them out, so. So I know John had brought it up to me, to be starting to enter information and start to build a database, and they were gonna be able to. They're gonna be coding some of the work they do, so you'll be able to worry out if they're doing snow removal versus gravel, which I think is gonna be huge for us. I think that's, I think that's gonna make the budgeting side and a lot of the other scheduling and everything, it's gonna be a little, be a little easier, I think.
And hopefully we get it built off of the Zandvoort, I think, too.
Right, well, I was hoping that. You know, and even if you could start, even if it's possible to start tying information even through GIS, or, you know, down the road where you can, you can, you know, link some of that information in, so you can start tracking the specific road, that X amount of hours of snow removal. But I mean, that's a long ways down the road, but I think those possibilities are there. I mean, if we have those technologies and we can utilize it, I think that'd be huge, I mean, when you, you know, trying to figure out how much time you spend on this road versus this road? If this road deserves more time, or, you know, because, you know, you always get the accusation sometimes, I ain't never spending time on that road. Well, if you track that information, maybe they're right. If they are, you know it, and if they're wrong, you have the information to show, hey, we're out there, it's here, so. I think that'd be good for everybody. Yeah. I don't know, maybe Mexiade can still lose paper time card, I'm not.
Well, all real.
Well, and then on top of this. Yes, yes. Well, and you eliminate things like handwriting issues and all that, you know, that, you know, some guys it's hard to read, and just other guys. Well, they wrote it, then they shoved it in their pocket and smeared the ink, and now it's got this. Yeah.
Because I never had the wheel on shit, you know, you do have an issue, you're shit.
You what?
That audience, right?
That wasn't that? Well, if you follow the legislative process and committee work, there's maybe not as many amendments, but there's just much discussion. And it's on the topic that big, it's natural that, I mean, it should be, that whole should be thought on well, and it should be, it's tough, it's a tough process. But that bill compared, actually, it was gonna be four thousand. That bill for maybe Mexiade was four thousand until the road department changed the plan. The labor stayed the same, so what I would, well.
Keep you guys on your feet.
Here's what happened. I honored, I honored my original quote. There was quite a bit of additional labor, because when we were tearing into it, the conversation came that we should add a small shower for decontamination. And also we had the scenario where we had guys sleeping in the shops during the storms. Using a pressure washer, yeah, but anyway, I agreed with it in the fact that if, since you were cutting the floor open and you were framing, you were doing all the work. If there was ever a time to do it, that was the time. So what I did was, we purchased a shower and the fixtures, and I did that at cost. I did not mark that up at all. So that's why I did the separate bill. I'll, I'll bring the receipts if you want. I did, I even thought of including the receipts, but I didn't have it in time to submit the bill. But I, I did not mark it up, because I thought it was a good idea and I wanted to try and stay close to my budget. And I, I did not mark it up, because I thought it was a good idea, and I wanted to try and stay close to my budget. You guys wanted to know, you do that, but I got a collections guy, just so you know. Well, the other thing we did, since we were there, too, we also added a spigot to the front of the building, up by the door for the pressure washer, because originally there was only one spigot, it was backed by the bathroom, so you had to run garden hose all the way across the shop. Since we were redoing all the water lines in the walls, we ran one up to the front of the shop, and that. Yeah, we ran, just ran it on the outside, right underneath the conduit, and we put an extra spigot, which now you run a ten-foot hose instead of a hundred-foot hose, so.
That's a nice shop up there.
It's really, it's really turning out nice. And honestly, if you really would pencil out all the dollars. When we were talking about building a shop four years ago, and it was gonna be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and we had no property yet. And we probably have a hundred and fifty into the entire property over the last four to five years, and we have that shop for that. I mean, and the location was perfect, because the other locations were gonna be in town. Now, we're right on the edge, right on the highway for truck traffic, we don't have load restrictions. We were pretty fortunate to purchase that property. It's worth, it's worth updating, because that shop is. And we got two blades parked in there right now, and there's still room for a skid loader or something, too, so. Well, thanks for coming again, Kelly, appreciate it, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I just remember when I first started. I just remember when I first started, and we were having a hard time clearing the Hazelton route, we couldn't figure it out. But the Hazelton guy had to quit around dark, because he had to drive back to Linton yet. Because in the winter, I mean, in the summer, we were parking outside, but in the winter, you gotta thaw that thing out. And I remember looking at the front tires, and they were almost bald. And I remember thinking.
I know a lot of what he's waiting, he's doing a pretty damn good job for a young guy. Forty-five? You know, to.
I'm not supposed to discuss that stuff. But no. Justin's doing a real nice job. I, 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 I had a, I was working. I was working, I was working out on his route, and the wind blew that one road shut, he came out, opened it, he did a very nice job. Starting off good.
I said what I asked about this gal, this human gal, I didn't know she was. And then he was laughing, can't see her.
Well, you're still on camera, right? Then I gotta always say that like once an hour to remind you guys you're still on. Well, if our meetings aren't on KX News, they can end up on Funny Sun Vincent's water here, right? Don't get any ideas. Well, I think recording the meetings has been a huge, I think it's been good, people like it, and it's good. Public Beck broadcast of the public hearing is very good, I mean, they had good camera angles, Oostix was good. Yeah, I, I watched it, I thought it turned out great, I thought Beck did a great job. Oh, you, you were on camera last night, and I wanted to let you know, like, don't take it, you know, it's because Dan was up at the Burley County meeting, and he was right behind the podium where the angle was. So every time someone spoke, and then Dan, I'm like, oh, don't take it, you know, it's not.
Do they have a public hearing on the same thing, or did they?
Well, they, they, yeah, it was a first reading, kinda, I mean, so I would imagine they're, if they're gonna move. Sounds like they're gonna wait, let their lawyers look at it, things like that, if they have a public hearing, that's coming down the road. That'd probably have to be at the civic center, like some of the other meetings they had, that city county building wouldn't hold up.
This guy, mine, he put it in back anymore, I was in rows.
Oh, yeah.
He did, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, he had standard double, or it is double.
Well, I mean, you did, you got five rows to one. Right, mine, I did five rows. Local guy did one.
I know I got several calls, because people were asking why the county guys were working till ten, eleven o'clock at night, and so. That's not the county guys' thing, that's, that's snowcat operating, they thought it was us, like, they thought it was ours, a lot of them were calling, and then they're so. No, I saw you guys right down the river, I'm like, no. But no, there was quite a few people that made the comment that he was out late into the night, but I know quite a few people that.
Well, like we discussed before, if you're out of town. Clinton's not a hubbub of activity at nighttime, he has his hotel, he's liable to work.
Yeah, he was out working, that's for sure, because I know, there was one night, for sure, when they came back from my office, and it was dark. Had to been at least eight, eight-thirty. And he was loading up off the road, right off I- eighty-three, I could see all the lights, and I'm like, holy cow, that guy is going late, so, yeah. They put in some hours when they're old, and that's for sure. And then he started, or, I mean, he was starting at six-thirty, I mean, almost date right there, even a little before, and.
Sometimes five, five-thirty.
And he was. I got a lot of compliments on that machine. A lot of, and the work he did, too, like, that's just the machine, but it just, I think that's turned out very well.
That's what we volunteer and work to be on part of this debate? When did they, we need it? Somebody should have begun that. Even I didn't see any on there, so.
Sold. Sold, sold, sold. Motion Commissioner Hall, John.
Yeah.
A lot too many committees away, it was, I can't even see them straight.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Mean that, thank you. On an offer. Yes, I agree, and I think they want a commissioner out there, so that'd be good. Hey, Marla's?
It's still amazing. We have to go back. As a matter of fact, we're in practice for, now, head senate, the state of emergency services. All auditors, so they're making a determination now.
And what would be the issue?
Well.
Yeah, fail.
I, I think the legislature has appropriated so much for emergency snow too.
You wanna sign that?
Is it twenty million? Would they appropriate airman million?
Oh, you're talking about the Senate bill going through for the emergency snow removal? Want to say they started at around twenty-five or thirty million, and it might have got reduced to one hundred and twenty. So it's somewhere in that area.
So they're, they're determined.
I think, were they gonna go? Were they gonna go by township? I think that was the way they were pushing.
Last year, five, last five years of our snow removal, um, salaries, fuel.
Because I know the, the associate, or the, the association of township officers or whatever is really doing a lot of lobbying on it, so my assumption is, which, it doesn't matter to us, because we don't have any townships other than the one, so they just accumulate it anyway. But I think it's going to be a specific amount per township.
Townships had to also send in, while ours didn't have to, because we have.
We do their snow removal, right.
So I just sent that to our.
So I think, I think that's where it sounded like it has a pretty good chance of going through the Senate, but then the House will get their shot at it, too, so.
The federal government hasn't approved yet, though.
I don't, I haven't heard anything on the federal government, but I know that.
Well, no, the states, the legislators are appropriating, are appropriating some of it.
Legislature, yeah.
The state's gonna, if it passes, we're gonna get my name state. And whether, if it passes or matches, puts up with it.
If they don't pass.
And they're, that's what.
But see, the.
But you know this, let me tell you, this, these builders came here, and the contractors, we're asking that, oh, that would be covered in. Because the expenditures are just up to the end of December. At least happening in January.
Yeah, but the expenditures is just for the Senate bill. You're not talking about if the governor declares an emergency.
If, if, who declares an emergency?
Well, I.
We're waiting for the federal government, they haven't done any.
But did the state declare an emergency as well? Because there's two different things here, when you're talking about the Senate bill. That's totally different from declaring an emergency like the governor would do, which, right now, the governor's probably not going to declare an emergency unless we would get hit again.
Right.
You know? In February, March, April, we start getting three, four storms on top of what we got. Then you might see a state emergency declared, which would open us up for, that's a whole different funding mechanism than what the Senate bill. The Senate bill is just, some legislators got together, they wanna draft the bill, put some money aside just for snow removal, that.
Emergency services must be ready.
Well, I, I don't know.
That's where I have to.
Right, I mean, I'm assuming they're probably.
That doesn't pass where it's allowed.
We don't get enough of the campaign. Emergency.
Yeah.
Which is passed.
Yeah. But at this point, I don't really see the need to spend a lot more emergency funding at this point. I mean, if we're just kinda going towards regular type stuff like we're doing lately. Huh? Is this where? At this point, I said, now, if we get hit with a string of storms, which, I mean, we're only in February, I mean. Right, but I'm just saying that if we're gonna just get wind events and one or two inches of snow like we've been through, I, our budget can handle that. It's just if we get another two, three storm event in ten days like we did there, then, yeah, then we're.
Skylar, how much overtime do we have in snow removal, which is the game?
We have to go back and look at time cards. I mean, there were one really cold day we didn't run, and then we didn't run. But that was, then fifty-some, fifty, sixty hours.
Ma's checking on.
I was checking on the guy.
Well, Ma's checking up on you guys.
You left?
Oh, you dropped that right off, yeah. Yeah, it's got nothing to do with what you guys know, you're on the. That's right. That's had nothing to do with county business, mind your own business, you can tell us if you want to. You know, we're still on camera, you're lucky on that one. Well, if you guys are done with the bills, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make ice wine.
Motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned, go ahead, hit it.
I get to do it?
Yeah.